Which towers above the trees picture. I don't know if you guys have that picture. These photos were also taken at the lowest points in our neighborhood where there is obvious tree cover. It appears as as of the tower in the simulations is much shorter than the actual proposed structure. This was not disputed by the representative from T-Mobile at the zoning planning commission meeting. The long-term plan for this area is developed to the east. Will this affect that development? Of course it will. What about our property values? There is. There is very high chance that this will affect the property values of the homes in the area. Also, the structure which will have a large light at the top which will run 24 hours a day. Why are they unable to rent space on an existing tower? They talk about this specific location, but according to the representative, there were 15 other landowners contacted in various areas of the county that would have been suitable. Not only will this tower not be aesthetically pleasing, but there are concerns of unknown health risks related to 5G radiation. The Ridge Run Homeowners Association is opposed to the construction of this tower. Thank you very much, Katie Pelster, 1686 Ridge Run, HOA president.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council?
Can you tell me how many people are in the homeowners association group there?
Seventy, she said. Seventy homes.
Homes, okay.
That's what she had in her statement.
Do you have anything else to add?
I'm sure they pay their fair share of taxes too.
Sure.
And the engineer that did the calculations is a civil engineer. He's not a structural engineer. So he may be old enough to be grandfather to be a civil, to get by with doing that job, but he his stamp says civil.
Okay.
So so we are the property owners that are right on, excuse me, I lose my voice, right on the edge of this property. We own five acres. We were never consulted during this whole process. No one came knocking on our door to ask if this was okay. But our home and our shed is the property that if this tower fails, may very well fall on our property.
Greg did ask me if it was okay for me and I said, well, I wouldn't do it to you. That's what I said to him. Anyway, we do have a well that's right down there. It's 65 feet from our property line to our well. And this tower is 85 feet. And calculations are true, but they also fail. So I feel that that well isn't in the way of the tower possibly someday. Why should it stop me from building another shed down there someday? I mean, why are you constricting me to that kind of a rule? You know, I was there first. Anyway, I thought if the minimum should have been 250 feet offset, not just the 85 feet. Because that's in your amendment 431218. For the telecommunications telecommunications tower. The back set offset in the design. And I do feel it will reduce our value of our home in the future if we'd like to sell. Or if we wanted to purchase more of the property around us, it kind of takes away some of the appeal that we have.
And then I'll just make one more statement that was made at the meeting last week. So we live on 252nd Road, which has become become a major thoroughfare from the city for people traveling to Lincoln. So four or five months ago, we were there. And the planning committee told us to prepare for the city to move out our way. They were going to pave the roads and the city was stretching east. So I asked all of you to to evaluate the question, do we really want a 250-foot cell tower in what could be city limits eventually? When maybe there's a tower or something else that should be considered before putting up a 250-foot structure that is gonna heat, it's gonna hinder sewer's ability to grow east, which is where it's located, so.
Or let sewer grow that direction and you gotta do another water tower or something in the first place possibly? You know, consider that as an extra or possibly something that you don't even notice.
And a lot of people at the meeting last week were that live out there said they had no problem with cell coverage. So this might be cell coverage for somebody traveling along the interstate or Highway 34, but we certainly don't have problems with cell coverage where we're at.
And we're right there.
And we said we live right there, so. Anything else? I think we went over five minutes.
Well, you're you're fine.
Thank you for your consideration.
Hopefully the next water tower won't be our problem either. We'll see. We got we got we got to finish the one we're working on right now. Anyone else from the public wish to come to the side, please come forward at this time. We have a card for you to fill out as well when you're finished. Welcome.
Hello, I'm Marla Bumble. My husband, Brian Bumble. We live at 1560 252nd, so right across the road from the Germers. I was not at the meeting last week, but I had a a letter that I think got submitted somehow. As far as this tower, the health risks, you know, they say that everything is safe right now, but we always hear that everything's safe. Then five years down the road, 10 years down the road, now it causes cancer or does this or that. I've read some things where the tower can cause like headaches and dizziness for people that are around it. Long-term effects would be the increased cancer risks. I also read that there's possible of, you know, it can cause types of brain cancer. And like I said, you know, everybody says it's safe right now, but will it be in five, 10 years? Because they always find new things on that. And also, like the Germer said, is going to really affect our property value and aesthetics. And as she said two, four months ago, five months ago, we were here and everybody was saying how sewer is moving to the east. Well, you know, are people going to want to build around this thing? You know, it'd be right in the middle of maybe something similar to Ridge Run, you know? Basically, you know, just saying that we're really opposed against this tower. It's just not going to look nice. It's really close to our area. So I'd just like you to consider that part of it. And, you know, just leave one thought. If any of you lived right next to that where that tower is being put up, would you want your kids or your grandkids, you know, living around that tower? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to come out on this item, please come forward at this time. See, seeing no, yes.
May I respond to some?
We typically don't allow rebuttals. But if, yeah, we'll just move on then with the council. So we'll we close the public portion of the public hearing then.
Is this okay then?
No, no, we'll worry about it.
Okay.
And then we'll return to the council for any for discussion. This is just, it's an application, I think it just requires a simple motion. So if you have any questions or comments or entertain a motion.
I have a question.
Yes.
Matt and I were able to attend as liaison to the Planning and Zoning Commission, representing the city council because you assigned it to us, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for being there.
I I learned a great deal. I think that Planning and Zoning Commission did a very thorough job of asking questions about the concerns expressed by the citizens who live in the area. They also were concerned about the process used for selection. And I I got the the opportunity to listen very closely to the representative from T-Mobile. And he did a very nice job of explaining exactly what his role was, which is the determination of a site to put a tower. That was that's his mission. It's not any.
That's his job.
That's his job. It isn't anything other than that. And I think as the citizens started to talk through, the representative from the Planning and Zoning, our our chair, Ron Lomond, did a very nice job of explaining that while the FCC has the current structure of five two towers is, you know, there's no solid evidence of health risks at this time. So that was expressed here this evening as well. So I I think the the number one thing that I took away from that meeting was the safety issue about the collapse of the tower should that occur. And when I left the meeting, I wasn't convinced that I knew everything about that feasibility. You know, in in Nebraska, we have a number of challenges to towers between high winds and ice, as we just went through a march to remember. And I believe that when these kinds of decisions are made, we have to look at the big picture and what the benefits are to the community and the benefits are to the residents in the area. And I think that makes it very important that we all listen very carefully to the to the before making this decision this evening. All right, that's all I have to say, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. And thank you both for your attendance at the planning commission. We appreciate it.
I guess I'd like to to address what what Richard's saying too. I was I was at the same meeting and the the planning commission spent a lot of time asking about the the fall radius of the tower and then what the process was to reach out to other people to get to get their equipment on existing towers. And one thing that wasn't brought up was on if we looked at the property, and I don't know if it's in our in our packet and stuff, but the landowner also has the ability to put it next to their home as close as to their neighbor's home. So it's quite a bit, it's basically right next to their neighbor's home and a long ways away from their own home. So they picked that site. I was contacted by Dr. Hoff, who owns the land north of the Germers. And he mentioned to me that he would like to develop the lot west of the Germers for his daughter possibly to build a home there. So that would be quite a bit closer to the tower if possible. Those are some of the comments. And then another another comment that came up also after the meeting in discussion was the tower 1.7 miles away north and northwest on the Harold Land that's not being utilized. Why why couldn't other towers be developed in that area right right next to the tower if that one isn't isn't doesn't suffice? So what's what's the problem with developing more towers in the area where there already are towers? So those are some of the comments that came up. And I'm just, you know, kind of reiterate reiterating the comments of 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 the people on the planning commission. So and that's that's why the vote was zero six against.
Thank you, Matt. Anyone else have any questions or comments from the council?
I guess I feel like there's more questions that need to be answered. And rather than reject this, I feel like I'm responsible to table it if we feel that there's answers that we can find to those questions.
The only the only reason I disagree with that is the fact that I think the the current neighbors and stuff have been kind of through enough with this whole process.
And that's fair.
And and I don't I don't think it's that easy for them to come to these meetings. They obviously they they're not at these meetings as as much as we are and not familiar with the process. So I I think we should make a decision tonight and get done with the issue. I I would prefer it.
Oh, that's fine. I mean, I'm just I'm just trying to see if if there is a path forward for the company that that satisfies the concerns. That was my question.
Maybe look at the location. I feel like the location is a bigger deal than even just the collapse of the tower, which is what we're probably wanting more information about.
Yeah, that is what I was wanting more attention about.
But I think it's still the aesthetics and the growth when it comes down to versus that.
You could watch and you could make a motion to table this and then see where that vote goes. If that would have failed, then you would have the option opportunity tonight yet to make a motion on this item, whichever way you want to make the motion. We typically, if you voted on the item tonight, we typically wouldn't bring it back necessarily unless there was a substantial change to the proposal. Because we typically don't want to just keep bringing the same item back.
Right.
And to Matt's point, it's not fair to people who are concerned to have to come back every two weeks. Much as we love to have you here every two weeks, you might have more pressing members.
Well, and some people are missing out on the Chicago concert tonight that had tickets to it, so, yeah.
So this is really serious.
This is serious.
I didn't know how serious this was.
This is serious. They have a horn section.
Yes, they do.
So I guess I have a question for Kelly. Kelly, are there any legal things we need to be aware of with the application or anything that we're missing?
Well, you have you have requirements, I think, for for that falls out, correct?
Correct.
You know, it's subjective at this point because they have, you know, a civil engineer's opinion, but we don't have anything in our corner at this point, so. I think you're within your rights to vote on it tonight if you want.
Okay, that was my question. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments or someone like to make a motion? I'll make a motion to deny. We have a motion to deny the application.
Second.
We have a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please register your votes. Please play the votes.
Voting in favor of denial is Francis Gao, Kayla, Tanya, Coleman, Singleton, Streisand, Warren, 7-0.
All right, thank you. Our next item, number six, is also a public hearing. This is I'm just gonna guess some of you might leave at this time, so.
Please pause.
I'll pause for a moment if you'd like to to leave, although you're welcome to stay. The door does ding every time.
No, not anymore.
You fixed it?
Yeah, it doesn't ding anymore.
Oh, that's the other one. You used to do all the time. All right, thank you. Thanks, everyone. Have a good evening. All right, next we have item number six is also a public hearing. These are the revisions of the one and six-year street improvement plan. We are required by the state of Nebraska to have a one-six-year plan. And it's also a good opportunity to for the council to kind of get on the same page as far as what our priorities are moving forward. It's also a good good way to provide the public with kind of a heads up on on what the future road plans are. I can tell you when I first became mayor, this was a little fast and loose on some of the items where things would be on the one-year plan or well, well more than one year. And it kind of gave a false sense to some residents in sewer that certain projects were going to happen that didn't happen and at least not in a timely fashion they made it hoping for. And other projects, you know, were were not prioritized, where sort of the public would have wanted them prioritized. And so this is also a good opportunity where typically if it's in the one-year plan, it's it's in the budget and we're actively working towards that project. The rest is just more foreshadowing what we're looking to in the future. Obviously, roads are expensive, so some of these plant priorities may may shift depending on what what road money may be available at what time and in what amount. And so with that, I stalled as long as I could so you could hand out your maps and so or your your spreadsheet, so welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Mike Wannabe, City Engineer. You had your packets, these two sheets. They're hard to read on that small screen, so I printed them out for you.
Printed them. Thank you. Yay.
I also, I didn't have ready, but I have tonight traditionally the two maps. Derek's gonna add this to the packet, but this basically shows us graphically, so you can quickly scan over, so use the both together. Essentially, we have not added any projects to this this year. So in the last several years, we've taken the opportunity to add some new projects as our priorities have changed, as we have had input from council members, both current and past. And one thing that impacts this list, the way we haven't added projects, is the cost of each project is going up essentially has doubled in five years, right, since COVID. And so we are our our tax receipts are doubling accordingly. So we can do less each year on a lane mile per lane mile, per year. And so what we have to do is kind of spread the projects out. So that's effectively what we've done. Primarily this year, we just kind of reoriented the projects. We also have a hard time finding engineers, equipment, laborers, and all sorts of things to execute the projects. So a lot of the projects we thought were going to be completed a year ago are currently Park Ave and Bradford, the Storm sewer projects. They're still lingering. There's a little bit of seeding going on. And and so we haven't been able to move fast enough to our other projects. But going over the one-year plan projects, we have eight listed there. The first three essentially we have wrapped into a single project. We awarded that contract to Amy Collins recently at a previous city council meeting. We we planned at the July 1st meeting to have that contract approved and signed. The water main project is separate. That will be built first. And then we anticipate August 1st that this road project will go on. That's Workman Boulevard Extension. Of course, this is for Gary. It's marked in orange. Projects one, two, and three down in this. And so this project, effectively, two months of the four months allotted of construction will be in this fiscal year. However, it's a substantial cost and it stretches into next year. So we normally straddle years, but effectively, and that does impact the projects that we had originally planned for this next year in past years, right, under the six-year plan. And so we still have moved forward several additional projects, right, that we see in the kind of in the pink color. Project four, so this is up near the upper right. East Hillcrest has been in design since 2022. It's taken a long time. We think we are, we had a good meeting last week. We just have a few corrections to make on that project. We anticipate being able to bid that late summer and then start up construction. Contractors really tell us that they're busy, likely to be in spring when they do most of the work. Hopefully, the storm sewer utility work, there's water main as well associated with that project, can yet be completed this fall, so we'll take advantage of that as we can. Project four, five is is the bridge project. It's entirely paid for by the federal government. And then we've got project six and seven. This is what we anticipated doing this year. And based on our budgeting, these may have to slide into the next year. Project six here from Bradford and Roberts from Fifth Street to Sixth Street. That extension of Storm Sewer completes the drainage that we have down Bradford all the way to 10th Street. And so that project is virtually complete in design, ready to go, about $650,000. Potentially, we can squeeze it into fiscal year 2026, potentially not. The other project in question is Project Seven here, which is the next portion of East Hillcrest from Columbia to East Ridge. We want to widen that three, four feet and and complete that. That is already in design. And because the bridge will be out, it's advantageous to do both of those projects when that bridge is out because we're reducing the amount of traffic that people are coming across the road. So we'll see how that goes in sequence. Project seven is a little bit pricey and I got 2.12 million. And so just based on cost alone, that may also have to shift later into 2026 calendar and potentially fiscal year 2027, October 1st. So we'll just have to wait and see on that. So that's the one-year plan. I'll pause briefly for questions.
Just note also our bike trail one is project.
Oh, yeah, I'm so sorry. And we we did this, so we have Project Eight up here, the last one. And effectively, what we're doing is we're splitting off to be able to serve the Wellness Center properly is the bike trail project from Carroll K to Columbia. Bob's crew is going to take over and and pour that section of the trail. So it's 2,600 feet, 10 foot wide, 49 trucks of concrete, quite a bit of work. But but actually, they'll be doing that portion in-house. And with that, we have a a much lower cost for them to do that. Of course, his crew loves to do concrete work. They appreciate having, they do, they understand concrete. They do a good job and we would appreciate having that done. So that gets the next segment of the bike trail done. We still have, you know, in in design, the current project. We have some issues with rail crossings that we have to trade give on.
But this portion is designed.
This portion is.
It's designed, it's graded, it's ready to go. Minor items to just take care of around the intersections, but even the crossings are there already. So Bob just needs to connect up to them. But this is out of all the projects we have, maybe other than the bridge project or the feds, this is the predominant safety concern occurring right now. If you're going up to the Wellness Center, you're just need people on bikes and walking and jogging all over the place up there on the really road. As much as we post the speeds as low as we can, there's people driving through there really fast. It's just a huge safety concern and we have schools starting, before and after school programs, even though we are busing to the facility. Those middle schoolers are still going to be walking across the street. We need to make decisions about how that crossing would look, what we'll utilize there, all that. And we can't do that without getting a sidewalk in, so. It's a big deal to get this done. Matt?
Greg, when we had our levy discussion about having a little money for sidewalks and trouble in trouble areas, is that is that what this money is going?
We have some here. We have some different options, so we can add it here. We can also add it to the significant savings that we have in the Wellness Center. So it'll probably be a balance of those two buckets of money to help pay for this item is how we'll do this. But again, it's a path to school. It's a path for students. So it checks all the boxes that we had for the sidewalk program. It's also directly related to the Wellness Center in that area, so. But my predominant one, as we've talked about Mike and Bob, Tim and Joel, is that it's the safety concern. We got to get those people off the really road and get them on something. And it, there's connectivity all the way through. Everyone can make it to Columbia or Carroll K and then walk up from there, so. That's why we want, and again, we didn't want to do it on the north side because none of that's engineered. There's no, and we would have to deal with the whole issue of that gas main drought. That it's already a reason that we have a short sidewalk section in there now. Correct, Mike?
That's correct. We, you know, it wouldn't be take much, but you're right. It's it's.
But we already have this designed and done, so we just want to get in and get and take care of it.
Serve many more people, I think, with bike trail on the south side, effectively, so.
Michael, what's your thoughts?
Well, then on the six-year plan, so I have a second graphic here. And I list the projects one through 42 essentially. What you'll see is a lot of purple. And effectively, that's the sixth year of that plan. And we've shortened up the number of projects in in the early one through five years, one through four years. And we've kind of had to push those back collectively into the sixth year. We don't want to drop them off. We don't think any of those projects are unnecessary. There is a whole group down around Pine Street here in the lower left. And that kind of, the 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 goal was to eliminate all unpaid roads within the city limits. Of course, there's concentration down there. Those projects keep getting pushed aside. It seems cost benefit is probably not where we want it to be to move it up. We can at any time. And of course, even still, with this list here, just as other projects were recommended by the council at previous meetings on the one and six in previous years, we can certainly move this around, add projects, bump projects up after discretion, so.
You think 18 will get moved up sooner than 20, 30?
18, oh, it's a traffic signal.
As we.
So that is a very, that is a very stupid question. And at some point in time, the the state, we have warrants, the state, they have their data.
It'll be entirely dictated by the state. They will, we can request it and they will still tell us no if the warrants do not dictate it.
Do they just do like traffic, like?
Yep, they'll do traffic counts, so you'll see.
That's by our request or they do that?
No, they do it every year. So once they start managing that, and I'm guessing what it's gonna, what's gonna turn that is dairy. Once they see dairy come in, then they'll come back in and start doing it, this specific intersection every year. They may be doing it now. They just haven't come out yet this year. Because you'll see them. When you start seeing those black bars across the streets everywhere in town, that's when they're doing their calculations. But again, due to the fact that it's a state highway, they will predicate when it happens. It will not be, hey, we've, I mean, we've asked for reduction in speed limits for a while and they don't care at all, unfortunately. And I have a litany of other ones. Lights over by the Walmart intersection, lights out by the truck route. out by the truck route to the west. I have a litany of projects for the state that I have on their radar that, uh, just with the changeover with the district engineer, the right-of-way consultant just changed on behalf of that position. So we've, we're struggling a little right now. Trying to get some more stuff through, but that will dictate 18.
And Lori, just to be clear, Lori, we believe the Department of Transportation cares.
Yes.
They just have different metrics.
They're very busy.
You might want to write that. Write that down.
But Jonathan and I are continually on the request to NDOT. Jonathan and I, we send out these projects and say, hey, where are we at with this, or where are our statuses on this?
Just in case you heard it differently, I just wanted to make, make sure.
Oh, which one?
So like the traffic, it would be traffic lights.
The traffic lights? That is dependent. It's what warrants. For instance, uh, our extension of Worthman Boulevard, that is a grant-funded program through CDBG and, and NDOT, EOP funds. And so if we had another economic development project that was coming in, and that's what pushed the need for the signals, and let's be honest, the signals are not the expensive part. The expensive part is expanding the bridge that's to the south. That's going to be the expensive part.
But there would be a negotiation.
Yep.
At that time. And, and that's why, to their, Mike's earlier point, all of these, um, that are farther down the list, I mean, this, that's the fluid part of this that depends on funding, depends on priorities, depends on other factors. Um, the one they really want to focus on is the one-year plan, because those are the ones that are being done in some capacity. And so, um, that doesn't mean they can't slide, but they're the ones that are the, the, the current priority. The other items, like, so if you see other items on that list that you feel in the future, um, for whatever reason become more of a priority, then that's a conversation as a council you can have to, to address some of those needs. But, um, I would, I, I mean, Mike, unless you disagree, the order of these on the six-year plan, there's nothing magical.
There is nothing magical about them.
It's just you have to give it an order. Something has to go first.
They tend to split up overlay, do one overlay project per year. Uh, the projects done by in-house by the streets crew, we tend to split those up. Other than that, we, it's, um, it could be any, any number really, but forward and back.
And this is, we've come a long ways in, in this one and six-year plan. I mean, there's, I mean, John can tell you, there's a lot of information here, and it's supposed to be detailed, because we don't want, we don't ever want anyone to say, well, you know, we were blindsided by one of these projects. And so I'd rather have more projects listed, um, even if some, uh, may not be as high of a priority, just so that the public, there's full transparency. The public knows what we're talking about and what we're planning and where our, our heads are at on these projects, but also they have opportunity to speak on this, which takes me to the public comment portion of this public hearing. So if anyone in the public wishes to comment on this item, please come forward at this time. Not to cut you off, Mike, but does anyone else wish to comment on any of these, um, projects? If not, then I will close the public comment portion of the public hearing and return to the council, um, for any questions or comments. Um, I believe this just requires a, uh, do you want a motion to approve, I assume, revision?
And I would note, I don't, I don't know if we noted, this did go before public hearing, before planning and zoning as well.
Correct.
And they approved it unanimously, six to zero. Correct?
I, I moved approved. I think it's well laid out. And as long as I've been on here, there's a lot of things that we move around year to year based on the needs. So I'll approve it.
Perfect. Second. If a motion and a second, is any further discussion? Seeing nothing, register your votes. Please sway the vote.
Building in favor, Francis Scott O'Callaghan, Tonya Spolton, and Singleton Streisand, Oregon, seven, zero.
All right, thank you. Under administrative items, item number one, consideration of an amendment to the agreement with S E H Incorporated for Design and Bidding Engineering Services, the amount of, that's a big number.
It is a big number.
I was promising to be no math. One million, one hundred seventeen thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars and ninety-two cents for the wastewater treatment facility improvements project. Welcome back, Mike.
Thank you. Thank you so much. So we do have with us in attendance Colin Markerson from S E H. Um, he's based in St. Paul, Minnesota. He has been the project manager for this wastewater plant design all the way through. Prior to that, our Outfall Extension back in, uh, 2020, 2020. Uh, we've had very good success with the design. Our current amendments, there's $93,000 left in the budget of that plan set, effectively ready to bid is in the hands of NDE, the regulators for review. We anticipate getting that back by the end of this month. However, with, um, the inclusion of Derry LLC and a substantial portion of wasteload, we effectively have to turn on a dime. We have to incorporate what was going to be the next upgrade 10 or 20 years down the line. We think it's most effective to do it right now. Uh, and so there's a lot of things in this amendment that'll, that'll gives us the flexibility to go in a couple of different directions. So as the, as the, um, altered design proceeds, we could look at a different type of treatment process, perhaps will save some space. Colin's going to speak more directly to the specific items that are included in this amendment that we can adequately serve, um, the needs including, uh, Derry LLC. Colin?
Evening, evening, Mayor and Council. Nice to see you all again. It's been a little while. Um, I'd like to start off by saying it's been an absolute pleasure working with this city. Um, Greg and Mike and Brandon are top-notch, um, and spend the time that's needed, um, in order for us to make good, sound design decisions. Um, that being said, I think we are all, um, fortunate, um, on the timing on this thing. We could have moved forward with design, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, with bidding this project about a year ago. Um, and if, if we did, we would have been in a pickle now. Um, the flow and load from Derry would have put that, uh, project at capacity once they got up to, um, full operation. So as I said, we have, um, the luxury now of being able to go back and address those, um, flows and loads from Derry, um, and, and revise our design in order to account for those. So I'll just go through the amendment. You've got it in your packet. Thanks. You've got it in your packet. Um, but I'll just quickly go through specifics. Um, as Mike said, the project right now is into NDE. It's essentially approved. Um, we could move forward with bidding that project, and the city is also working with the State Revolving Fund folks to try to get, um, the loan finalized by July in order to take advantage of a 1.4% interest rate. Um, so that would be fantastic. Um, the thing is, we don't exactly know what is required to be completed by July in order to take advantage of that. So we have a meeting with NDE.
Is that they told you?
Yeah, we have a meeting with NDE on Monday, um, to try to figure that out. We think we're going to be able to take advantage of it, no problem. But in the event that we need to hurry things along, we actually, in this amendment, included bidding of the project as currently designed. Um, we may be able to remove that from this, uh, amendment later. Um, and I should note that this amendment is, again, an hourly contract, just like our, all of our contracts have been from the start. So we only build the hours that we actually put towards the project. Um, so if we don't need to use those hours for, um, bidding that project, we just won't do that. We'll have to remove it from the, from the project at the end of the, at the end of the project. Um, item number two is, um, meetings with Derry, um, and additional information reviews. We've seen, uh, probably three or four different sets of numbers from the industry. To this point, we assume that there'll be probably a couple more iterations of that. So some time to, um, spend with them to make sure everybody's on the same page as far as what's actually going to be coming down the pipe from them after they go through their pre-treatment process. Um, also involved, item number three is the Derry site design items. Um, so although we are not involved with, um, the engineering of their specific site or their pre-treatment system, um, there are some things that we need to do to protect the city. Um, so where the, um, effluent from Derry's, um, uh, pre-treatment system comes into the sanitary sewer for the city, um, we plan to put a, a flow metering and sampling, um, structure, um, that would allow us to, um, get real-time data on what's coming down the pipe, and Brandon can prepare for those kinds of things. Um, and then the city will be able to charge, um, you know, their fees based on what's, uh, what's coming down the pipe as well. Um, we do want to make sure that we're understanding, um, the industry's pre-treatment system as best we can. Um, so we do have a couple of site visits with Mike and Brandon to, um, view these systems in operation and ask operators, you know, about downfalls of the system or challenges they've had, and make sure that, uh, we're as prepared as we can be. The other thing, um, that we heard earlier tonight is that Derry plans to be in operation by 2027. Um, I would like to say that we'll have the wastewater plant in, in operation by 2027, but I think that's, um, probably not going to happen. So one thing we need to do, to do is, um, addressing term treatment. So if, if Derry ramps up their production early on, and we've still got the existing plants in operation, uh, rather than the new plant, we'll need some sort of pre-treatment system to address that so that the existing plant can handle those flows and loads. Uh, that takes care of item three. Item four is preliminary design. Um, so one thing we wanted to do, um, in looking at these additional flows and loads, and, and the beginning, well, their full ramp-up, um, industry's full ramp-up, um, contributes about 30% of the loading to the wastewater facility in town. There's opportunity for them to have even more than that in the future. Um, we want to make sure that we are understanding, um, the full array of flows and loads for the city. So not only the industry, but we want to plan for future industry, future commercial, future, um, residential growth in the city, um, and have the city involved in those decisions so that we can all be on the same page about how we design this plant. Um, we then want to take a quick look, and we're already doing this actually, but take a quick look at comparing treatment technologies. There is an opportunity, we think there's an opportunity to potentially, uh, look at another treatment technology. Um, I don't think it's going to be cheaper at this point, but it may provide us more, um, opportunity for treatment capacity in the future, um, within the same footprint. So there's a value to that that we need to weigh against the cost. Um, so that's all part of the preliminary design. Um, four and, items four and five are kind of mixed together. So we, we labeled item five, CMAR delivery. Um, but what that really means is we are just completing final design, um, on whatever comes about in preliminary design. Um, the modifications that we need to make to this design are significant. Um, in fact, the only processes we aren't going to revise, uh, in this design would be influent pumping, the administration building, and disinfection before it goes into pre. Everything else needs to be revised based on the flow and loading. Um, so I, the specifics of those things are laid out in the amendment, and I won't go through each building. Um, but just to give you some, some idea of the amount of work that needs to be done, um, in order to revise the design, get it ready for bidding. Um, it's labeled CMAR delivery because, um, we think that, um, CMAR, which is Construction Manager at Risk, I understand that you guys are familiar with that from using that delivery method on the Wellness Center. Um, that could help us with, um, timeline, um, a little bit. Um, and it also, you know, has the benefit of contractor involvement and sequencing. Obviously, it's going to be a big deal when we come to build this new plant. Keeping the existing plant online is going to be crucial, um, and challenging. Um, so having contractor involvement for some of those things may be beneficial. So a small amount of item five is procurement of a CMAR contractor, but, uh, the majority of the time in, in item five is really just those final design documents, preparation of, um, plans and specifications. Uh, and then item six is very minor. It's, uh, four thousand dollars of funding assistance. So, um, whatever we can help with as far as, uh, procurement of those SRF funds, uh, or financing of revenue. Uh, we went from about a $30 million construct, estimated construction cost to about a 40 or 41 million dollar estimated construction cost, or that's what we're anticipating, um, and stayed close to the same. Um, we, we, as engineers, we like to base our, I shouldn't say base, but compare our fees to estimated construction costs. Originally, we were at 6.3. Now we're at about 7.4. Um, with, with the delay and the changes we're making, I think that's pretty close to, to the line. It passes the sniff test to me, so to speak. Um, so I feel like, uh, we're in pretty good shape to move forward. What questions can I answer?
Sniff test sounds horrible.
That is wastewater.
I don't want that job. Any questions or comments to the council?
I, I had a question, I had a question about number two. Colin, when you were talking about the, when you've had the meetings with the dairy people and the ranges all over the place, can you give us an idea of?
How big the ranges are?
Yeah, yeah. Like, can you pull some numbers at that?
Um, as, as far as dollar amounts or loading or?
No, no, often, like, like, what is, I mean, how, how much capacity? Like, what are we talking? Like, has it changed dramatically?
Uh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that it's changed dramatically, but the city's been going back and forth with them on, there's kind of a sweet spot as far as loading versus surcharge when it comes to billing. So we've kind of said, let's back off. Derry, can you provide enough treatments so that you can get to this number so that you're not going to get surcharged? We think we can handle that amount at the plant. Um, so we're kind of going back and forth with them based on surcharge, um, limits.
And the pre-treatments, yeah, a big deal.
Correct.
For that, because it impacts the change.
Yeah, if they didn't have the pre-treatment at Derry, we'd certainly have to do something more at the plant.
Where, where will you go to see the, the pre-treatment?
There's one in Cold Spring, Minnesota. I don't know where the other one is yet. So in our agreement, we put a hundred mile, within a hundred miles from Omaha.
Colin, also, you helped us and assisted with us in some projections on, uh, looking at billing and surcharging for that dairy project as well, that we submitted to them and said, based on these loadings, this, in the future, this is the substantial amount we're going to charge you to process all this over. And then we projected over a given number of years for the debt service, correct?
Correct.
That what we wanted to see and how much that would contribute to pay back the 1.4% SRF loan. So.
Yeah.
And it's, it's significant.
Yeah. And furthermore, we were also involved with the rate study.
Yep.
So we can project those rates out, um, responsibly.
But it did help significantly. They were secure 1.4% versus, I think we were looking at like three to four or above with WIFIA. And then we had a bond rate one as well.
Over four percent.
Yeah.
With this project in sight, that's real money.
Absolutely, that is, yeah.
Some milk money.
Intended.
Now, you'd be here all night.
No.
You'd sure have taken your waitress.
You'd kick me out.
He's going to get to that Chicago show. Or not.
Any other questions or comments? Do you have Mike?
I may add, I have some numbers for the changes in flow. I did check back. Jonathan got the original numbers, 240,000 gallons per day of wastewater to this plant two years ago. Um, it's currently 286,000 gallons a day, which isn't much, but with phase two, that's likely to double. So, and we actually dropped from 240, uh, when they had a different process engineer, dropped lower. There was, and I think that was the initial operation was, and the ramp-up was much slower than it currently is. So basically, they're designing half a facility, getting that ramped up rather quickly, five to seven years, and then they're going to plan on doubling if, if all is successful. In terms of loading, in terms of strength of wastewater, uh, we've battled around, we're agreeing upon 300 milligrams per liter of biological oxygen demand, the organic loading. It had been, our old organs set, uh, a, a surcharge limit of 200. And so that was the negotiation back and forth. So you factor in the flows and multiply it against the loadings, and that's essentially what our bacteria down at the wastewater plant have to consume, right, to clean the water up. So it has moved around substantially back and forth. water up. So, they have to move it around substantially back and forth, but-
With some leeway for an upset condition as well.
Yeah.
Thanks, Mike.
Still looking at the sequential batch reaction?
Yes.
We are.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
I, I'm sorry. I should, I should say that the other technology that we're looking at is Aqua Narita, if you're interested, um, in looking that up. But, that would be the one that would give potentially additional treatment capacity within actually a smaller footprint.
Any other questions or comments or any routine motion?
No, the only thing I was going to say is let's get this thing moving so we don't have to see the price take up up and up and up every time we talk about it.
Change orders, we like to do that.
I'll make a motion.
Second. So, we have a motion to approve and a second is in for a discussion. Same number, address to your votes. Please sway the votes.
Voting in favor, Francis Scott O'Callaghan, Tonya Spolten, Singleton Stretson, Oregon, seven, zero.
Thank you. Item number two, under administrative items, consideration of design options for the recycling center retaining wall project as developed by the Schemmer Associates. Welcome, Mike.
Good evening. So, there was a two-page memo in to basically describe our change, uh, slight alteration in direction. So, over a year ago, we contracted with Schemmer to come up with preliminary design, three different designs, decide what we're going to do with the recycling center. That embankment is starting to, has been washing in, uh, for a good, uh, couple of decades. Uh, we do have utilities up on the bank. We have a sanitary sewer, runs down what looks like an alley. Uh, part of that was vacated, part of it was covered alley. We have, uh, overhead electric lines that run as well. Those are being threatened. Um, and based on our, uh, meeting that we had, city council meeting, and a couple council members and the mayor expressed a desire that we would not abandon recycling. We would still have a drop-off site. So, it spurred us to come up with a modified alternate three. Bob Myers, with his experience with recycling, kind of devised this concept of how to efficiently allow a drop-off, um, where we didn't have, uh, an employee, we have low maintenance. Essentially, these are roll-offs that are delivered, two roll-offs, one for cardboard. It's got slits at the top. You can't fit big stuff in. That's for the cardboard. And everything else goes together because in this current market, everything is being collected together. If we sort it out, it just all gets aggregated and resorted later. And so, this allows us to not have a part-time person. And we think that the slope can be seeded and similar to the Carroll K Road to Nowhere on the east side of that, no mow, or probably mow, uh, once a year. And so, we'll reduce the amount. Most of the site will become a grassy area. We'll still have enough room for two roll-offs, the ability for a truck to back up, swap containers, probably a turnaround for vehicles, places for cars to pull in, all within the current site and at the lowest cost. So, it looks like, uh, our recommendation is to move forward with final design.